Yep, we have a few more seconds. It's not quite six o'clock yet, according to my phone. Okay, it is now six PM and I hereby call the special meeting of the San Benito County Planning Commission to order. If you could please read the temporary procedures. They've been excessively temporary, but temporary yet.
The San Benito County Planning Commission welcomes your comments. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of three minutes. When addressing the commission via Zoom, phone, or in chambers, please state your name and county in which you reside for the record. Please address the commission as a whole through the chair. If participating on Zoom, select the Participants tab and click the Raise Hand icon. If you are using a phone, press star nine to raise your hand. When your turn arrives, you will hear that you have been unmuted. If participating in person in the chamber, please complete a speaker card identifying the item on which you wish to speak and provide your completed card to the clerk prior to consideration of the item. Speaker cards are available on the table at the entrance.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Toledo, if you could please lead us in the pledge.
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in the name of our Constitution, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could get roll call, please.
Rodney Bianchi, District One.
Present.
Richard Way, District Two, is not present. He is absent. Robert Scagliotti, District Three.
Present.
Robert Gibson, District Four.
Present.
And Celeste Toledo-Bocanegra, District Five.
Present.
Thank you. Can I get an acknowledgement, a certificate of posting?
Also move.
So acknowledged. Consent agenda, nothing on the consent agenda. Regular agenda, item seven point one. Surface mining and operations and reclamation.
To the Chair, we're reopening a public hearing that was continued from the previous meeting.
Yes, thank you.
My name is Bruce Tubang with Benchmark Resources. You might seem familiar to you. I was here yesterday presenting the Joint Commission on Mining in the County. So today, we're going to take another run at the recommendation by the Planning Commission to the Board to adopt a updated surface mining and reclamation ordinance. And so I've actually reconfigured my presentation based on coordination with staff and with the fellow operators and also with commissioners. We were able to meet with the commissioners on a one-to-one or two-to-one basis. So I'm just going to review the changes we've made since the last meeting. How do I go to the next slide? Is this page? Okay. So what the main purpose of the ordinance update is to legitimize and update the ordinance, your existing ordinance to incorporate statutory and regulatory revisions that have taken place since the last time it was adopted. The other advantage is that we've taken a lot of requirements that were cross-referenced in the existing ordinance and moved them into the text of the proposed ordinance. So we believe this makes it much more transparent for the operators and decision-makers in the public as to what the applicable requirements are. And what we've also done is we've incorporated general plan requirements that are associated with mining and moved them into the ordinance itself. So rather than having, going to the general plan to find those requirements, they're specified directly in the ordinance now. And the other concern that was raised during the first draft of the ordinance was that this might increase fees. But as we discussed with the joint group yesterday, the fees are handled under a separate ordinance, so this update will have nothing to do with any fees associated with each of the operations. So this list here, I won't go over in detail. This just sort of outlines all the different requirements that are in your ordinance and all the different provisions. And so we've went through and for these, each of these subject matters, we've updated it to include updates to the, based on statute and regulation revisions. I mentioned this at the beginning. And here are actually the key sections. So what we did, we, there's been some revised definitions based on both the county code and the Surface Mining Act and its regulations. So we've updated the definition section. There's a lot of new reclamation plan requirements, like having licensed surveyors and licensed engineers. So it's a little bit more strict than what the existing requirements are, are in the ordinance, so we're just bringing you up to current snuff with that. The financial assurance interim management plans, for those, there are procedural revisions that have been done. And as I mentioned to you during the previous meeting, we've already worked with the county to make sure that the county's in compliance and the operators are in compliance because we understand those regulations. But now we're just bringing them forward and adding them to your ordinance. And then we've also added some new revisions based on inspections and enforcement. There's a much more iterative process now between the operators, the county, and the state with inspections and enforcement provisions. So this actually gives the operators and the county some more flexibility in how they work together to resolve differences and to conduct inspections. And there are actually two new provisions, for the county borrow pits, for county-specific sites. You don't have any in this county, but if you were in the future, there'd be a provision for you. And there's also a new provision regarding renewable energy generation facilities. Granite Rocks already availed themselves of this a couple of years ago, and so we worked with your staff to get a new solar field on some of the reclaimed areas. But now we've actually explicitly included that in your ordinance. And these are just some of the provisions that we included from your general plan into your development standards in your ordinance itself. And then, so in terms of where we're in the process, we've been working with state staff to try to ensure that they've reviewed the draft ordinance. And so before we take it to your Board of Supervisors, we want some comfort level from the state staff that it's not going to be approved by the board, taken up to the State Mining and Geology Board to get certified, and then kicked back. Because that's happened in the first county that went through this process, and you're number two. So we're trying to avoid that. I'm not going to give you any promises because you never know what happens in a public hearing, but our goal is to try to reduce the repetition in that. We also, so after you make your recommendation, it'll go to the Board of Supervisors, that will then go up to the State Mines and Geology Board for certification, then you'll have a certified ordinance. So I do have two additional items that came up today that I wanted to discuss with the Planning Commission. So the first has to do with the nomenclature we used for the planning department. We actually had a reference to what, how it was, how it had been historically referenced, but now we've updated that. And we, Ariel's going to provide some language that she'd like the commission to adopt in lieu of the language in there. Do you want to do that now or after I do the next? Now, okay.
So previously, the way RMA was organized, the head would have been the Assistant Director of the Resource Management Agency, and we are modifying it that to take place a Director of Planning and Building. And so, and that's just to make sure we're consistent with the current structure of RMA. And I-
Do you want to put that in the text?
And I have that right here for you. It's right here, the three.
And then we had one other comment that we actually just received a short time ago, and so I wanted to present it to you as a proposed revision to the text that we offered to you in the packet. So this is under your development standards, which is subsection thirteen, then under E three, which has to do with traffic, safety, and roads. And this is actually under the existing ordinance, and we did, that's why it's not in track changes. We were going to propose that that language be carried forward. But one of your operators had some concern with this and expressed it to us, and so we wanted to present it to the commission to consider. So it's E three, and it says, "The use permit shall specify the haul routes on public roads. Should any truck operate-" Should any truck operating from a surface mining operation create a hazard to life or property, the planning director shall declare the surface mining operation a nuisance and set a revocation hearing before the Planning Commission." And so what the operator said to us is that the majority of trucks that come to a mining operation are not controlled by the operator themselves, so they don't have a lot of control. They can give them, like, a lot of times in different jurisdictions, they'll give, they'll have signs posted, "Please obey the law," but there's only so much the operation can do. So the operator's concern was is that if someone that doesn't, we don't control, creates a danger or public health, why should our permit get revoked when it's, when we're doing everything in compliance with the law? So what I suggested, that instead of it being "shall," change that, we recommend that that be changed to "may." And then that way, if it does somehow get traced back to the operator that they're not conducting themselves in a proper fashion, the planning director does have the ability to schedule a revocation hearing, but they're not required to. So it allows them to sort of balance the facts. So my recommendation would be, as part of your motion, to include modifications to Division 13, E3, to change the language from "the planning director shall declare the surface mining operation a nuisance" to "the planning director may declare them." So that gives your commission and the planning director a little bit more flexibility. So those are the only two additional revisions beyond what was before you in your agenda packet. With that, Ariel and I are open for any questions you might have.
I'll open it up to public comment. Is there any public comment in the chambers?
There is no public comment in chambers, and there does not appear to be any public comment via Zoom.
Okay, public comment is closed. Back to the commission. Commissioner Toledo?
To the Chair, there were some additional technical changes that I made to the cover page of the ordinance that were not reflected in the package that was supplied to you tonight. Minor language changes in the first, on page 2, section 2, that instead of the word amend, it would be repeal. And in section 3, it would be adopt instead of amend. And then in addition to that, that codification, in section 4, there should be an instruction that codification is limited to Attachment B or Exhibit B, which is just the new text to the ordinance and not the initial general findings to the ordinance. It's the adoption clause and so on. So with those, with those changes, I recommend approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Toledo, do you have any comments, questions, concerns?
Yes, mine is pretty lengthy. Does anyone want to go first?
Go ahead.
Okay. I want to thank Benchmark and, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Bruce Tubin.
Bruce, thank you, Bruce, for helping and meeting with me today as well as Ariel. I appreciate your guys' time and energy in helping me better understand the process. I was provided also by Bruce a list of the active mine sites, which helped, and I believe we were all provided with that as well through the, yesterday's meeting. I took it upon myself to call each active business to see if they had any further concerns. I know in our world today, we are all busy, and sometimes we just, we are hard-working individuals and citizens and can't get to the important things. And it just helps when someone, when you receive that phone call from your local representative. So I did get people's points of views from the active mines, the members. So I am pleased to hear what they had to say, and so far, I heard that it was, they were good to go. So that's a good thing. They were comfortable with the revision. And also, I did have some questions that came up. Besides that, how long has, and this has to do not with the revision, but with in general, how long has Benchmark, since I'm new to this, how long has Benchmark been working with us in the county?
Yeah, I actually researched that before I made my introduction. Yesterday, we've been working with you since 2006.
Okay, great, great. Do you mind telling me, what process were we using before 2006?
You were just doing them by staff. Staff was doing their inspections. And then in 2006, we actually went on this, out to the sites with you and inspected it with your staff. And then you actually still did the inspection report, and we had a separate standalone inspection write-up that accompanied the inspection report.
Okay.
And then in 2000, I think that happened for the first few years. So in 2006, 2007, you, the county was still signatory of the inspection report, but you had attached sort of our guidance where we went into a lot more detail in terms of condition compliance and use permit, excuse me, reclamation camp. And then in 2009 is when we would still invite you, and sometimes your staff would come, other times you wouldn't, but we do that, did that on your behalf, and our mine engineer would then start executing those on the county's behalf. They're letting the county review things before we submitted them.
Wonderful, that's, that's great, Bruce, because just that collaboration is nice, that we can have that cooperation and collaboration between both parties. Also, what does it cost us? Because I know they're, they're charging, and I know you had mentioned the fees, and they would have to be a new ordinance. But just to make sure I got my ducks all in a row, how much is it going to cost San Benito County? How much is it costing us right now? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm going to let Ariel handle that.
Thank you, Ariel.
So everything that has to do with the operators is 100% reimbursed from the operators. So those inspections, when we do a use permit, when we do a rec plan amendment, it is 100% applicant paid, and it's not costing the county anything. The ordinance update did cost the county, and-
I can check, I don't have that.
We did an amendment originally, I think originally it was around 40, and I think the amendment we had to add up.
About 20, I think it's around, a little under 70.
Yeah, it was like 60.
And that was from 2015 to now? So from the time of 2015, we paid around approximately that amount, and then now we're paying that amount, or?
That, that is just the cost for the ordinance update. There has not been other outside, you know, costs to the county because it's 100% reimbursed.
Perfect, I appreciate that information. I think our citizens were concerned in regards to who pays for these bills, and we wanted-
The operators.
-to make sure that we were transparent. I didn't know, and now we do know. Okay, perfect. I think I pretty much covered that, unless something else comes up.
Thank you. Commissioner Bianchi?
I really don't, I just, Bruce, thank you, and Ariel, Rob and I met with you last week or week before, clarified a lot of stuff. The only question I do have is this "may" and "shall" on the whole trucking thing. I just, I don't.
Yeah, so I think, I think the rationale, so right now, the way "shall" is, is basically a mandatory requirement. Under your current ordinance, and this was not changed as part of our amendments, that if a truck leaves an operation and causes a hazard to life or property, so if he runs into something and crashes into it and either hurts property or, then your planning director would then have to schedule, deem that operation a nuisance, and schedule a revocation hearing in which they could actually lose their right to mine because of that action. So that's, that has to happen under your ordinance, so that's "shall." And so what I'm recommending is changing from that "shall" to "may." So that means that if after they do fact, after your planning director does fact-finding, and it's a guy that they had trusted, he had done 25 routes that were perfectly fine, he tried to avoid a deer or something and ran into a ditch and caused property, then after doing that fact-finding, the planning director wouldn't necessarily have to schedule a revocation hearing and deem them a nuisance. So it just gives the county flexibility to do some fact-finding before deeming the operation a nuisance and revoking, or scheduling a revocation hearing.
Okay, I-
And I didn't catch it actually when I was updating it and revising it, it was just brought to me.
Well, I mean, I think, I think the whole, the whole verbiage to begin with is kind of silly. I mean, that we're, that we're holding the mine operators liable for what a truck may do that isn't necessarily their truck, but, I mean, I'm in the trucking business, so it's a little touchy subject for me, because, you know, people that haul for me, I'm not necessarily responsible once they leave my yard, and that's what we're saying. And so I just don't understand that, but, okay, I mean, that's-
Well, one thing you could do, oh, go ahead.
I have one more suggestion. If you want to bring it back up on the screen. On number three, the first sentence has to do that with, that the use permit shall specify the haul routes on public roads. Vital and important, we want to know what the haul routes are. We could strike the rest of that sentence.
I'm comfortable with changing it to "may" rather than striking the entire thing.
One other thing is sort of a compromise between those two would be, should any truck owned or operated by a surface mine operator create a, and then that way, you're linking that, this might address your concern, you're at least linking that truck being owned or operated by that operator. That way sort of kind of mixes both, so that's another suggestion.
Okay, I'll see what everybody else's, I mean, I just, it just creates a gray area that, you know, "may," I mean, I don't know, just verbiage, I guess that's how attorneys make a lot of money.
And it does, I mean, if you have a planning director that is inclined to go against an operator, this gives them the authority to do that, but also if you have a planning director that wants to collect the facts, they don't have to do it. So I think, at very least, I think the "may" would be a good idea, but if you want to tie it, own and operated, I think that gives, maybe gives you a little bit more comfort.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
I don't think we need to go that far. I'm happy with changing it to "may." What are, what are the, what is the consensus of the commission on that particular subject?
I think the wording for a sub, like a sub-hauler type going in there, owner-operator that's not part of the mining operation, that should be somehow defined, if he does it, it's on them, not the, not the operator of the mine. Do you get, do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, so that way, I think my language does that, because if someone else hap, if it's not owned or operated by that-
By that mining operation, they can't control-
Then I think this, this would not give the county authority to go after them if it was a sub-hauler or just a private contractor.
I mean, I'm okay, I'm okay with that, but I guess the issue is, I have, if we're going to do this, then the dump needs to be the same way, and anything else that goes on in this county, that if you're hauling for the dump, any truck to go in and out of there, the dump's responsible for it. I mean, that's, if we're going to stay consistent, then that's what we, we should do further.
And if it's going to be the owner-operator's truck, then it should be a "shall." I mean, if we really want to start getting into legalese, then if it's their truck, then it should be a "shall."
It's a sticky situation, because if it's owner-operator truck, then it should be "shall." But if it's a sub-hauler going in and out of there that they cannot control, how do you, how do you word that? You know, that sub-hauler's going to, 90% of these, we have mine operators in the back. How many, is it mostly sub-haulers, guys, or most of your own personal trucks?
Mostly other trucks. I compared it to other businesses in the county that suggested that's kind of a-
Jason, do you mind coming up to the microphone just so we can capture it for the minutes? Thank you so much.
To the Chair, I would point out that enforcement of traffic regulations or creation of nuisances has independent authority. It doesn't need to be covered by this, by this ordinance. So if it's an independent operator and they cause damage, they, they have both civil liability and potential traffic violations that they can be, you know, cited for or prosecuted.
CHB can go after them?
Yes.
Just clarification, so what you're saying is, we don't necessarily have to go after the mine operator? Is that what you're-
That's correct.
Okay.
So the concern about independent operators doesn't have to be addressed in this, in this ordinance, because it's addressed separately under the vehicle code and other general nuisance law and civil liability.
Well then, Joel, which way should we word it? Which way should that be worded?
Well, the, I guess the issue is, if you were looking at trying to, I mean, if there's direct liability and control of the trucking operation, then the mine operator, you know, could be subject to revocation or other penalties. Perhaps you, you know, want to broaden that, but, again, I think if you're, you don't need to cover all the bases in the language in this ordinance. It should simply be confined to what the mine owner and operator is responsible for.
One quick question, should it be "shall" or "may" then? Just "shall" or "may"? Which way should it be?
Well, I still think that it's, you know, there's going to have to be some factual determination as a basis for whatever action is taken, and so leaving it to the discretion of the planning director based on the specific facts of the situation would be most appropriate.
So "may." "May" then, okay.
So, so we could specify not just the mine operator at the beginning of the sentence, but at the end, before Planning Commission, you know, you know, based on the facts or findings, you know, something to that effect at the, at the end of the sentence. We want to take a five-minute recess, and we can pop up-
Up with some language?
Yep.
So we're not shooting in the dark? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break so that we can figure out this verbiage, and we'll be back. Division thirteen E three. Joel, if you could please read the updated verbiage?
Can we pull up the PowerPoint?
Somebody could, Bruce?
Here you go, here you go. So it's been revised to read, the use permit shall specify the haul routes on public roads. Should any truck, and then we've added owned or operated by, and then deleted operating from, so that sort of makes the distinction that it's a surface mining operation creates a hazard to life or property, the planning director may, on the basis, basis of specific facts that warrant the, the decler, declarer, that I just think we have an extra word there. Okay. May on the basis of specific facts that warrant that the surface mining operation being found to be a nuisance, set a revocation hearing, revocation or other enforcement action hearing before the planning commission. So we want to delete.
So we're gonna delete the extra the and the word declare?
Correct.
Fantastic.
Oh, do you want to, actually, do you want to do the?
How, how satisfied are the planning commissioners? Commissioner Toledo, does that satisfy you?
I'm still worried that that someone may want to challenge it later.
That's, they, anyone has a right to challenge anything, that's fine. But did you have any verbiage changes or?
No.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Bianchi?
I'm, I'm, I'm happy with that.
Commissioner Scagliotti?
Yeah, I'll be happy with that.
Okay, fantastic. Are there any other comments, changes, suggestions to this ordinance before we get a motion on the table? Okay. I move to adopt the resolution to recommend that the board adopt the ordinance with the changes outlined by county council at the beginning of the meeting and the changes regarding the title of the director of planning and building, and the changes to the verbiage of Division thirteen, section E three. Did I miss anything? Okay, all those changes were captured in the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a rush. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Wonderful. Four zero. That closes the public hearing. Is there a motion to adjourn?
By motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, four zero. Thank you all for your patience and all your hard work on this endeavor.
Thank you.